All right, this time I'd like to call on Commissioner Ruben de la Rosa to lead us in an invocation, please.
Yo, please bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you as a community asking for your guidance during this meeting. That the decisions are made today are in the best interest of our cities, our city and citizens. I ask that you bless our businesses, schools, and medical facilities and keep them free of illnesses. We ask all this in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now formally call the meeting, this regular meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and go to Citizen Communication and Input and ask Amanda to let us know if anybody has signed up.
Mayor, I have four persons that have signed up. The first one is Christian Villarreal from 140 South Northwest Park Lane. And she wants to speak on Victor Park Tennis Improvements, and she wants to be called.
Okay, please, please call her. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hello, this is Amanda from the city of Harlingen. And Christian Villarreal signed up to speak regarding the Victor Park Tennis Improvements.
Yes, yes, Christian, that is me.
Oh.
I'm not actually a T, but it's okay.
Okay, sir.
It happens.
Okay.
Maybe.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna set the clock at two minutes, or I'll let you know when to start. You may start right now.
Okay, hey, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I, I, I come here today to talk about Victor Park Tennis Improvement. And I want to say thank you so much for what you have done in a speedy pace. I want to give a little bit of story here. I've only got two minutes, but I ran into Commissioner O'Dea back in November. And I had told him about the improvements needed there. And he said, hey, just give me your email. We'll see what happens. And then voila, soon, soon, right away. I had Dan Serna and, oh my gosh, the city park.
Javier Mendez?
Yes, Javier Mendez. And he came back with a plan of action. And not only gave me a plan of action, and so like the improvements happened like December. And then after December, he gave me another plan of action with the next step was. So I just wanted to say kudos to, to, to him, Dan Serna, the commissioners and the city. I mean, y'all did such a great job to, and it's still going on. I hope it still gets used to the whole Victor Park because it's right off the expressway. And I just want to say kudos because of the fast work. I'm going to do one more other story before I go. My wife Bonnie was on the Parks Board back in 2012. And I found some old boxes back there. And like Victor Park, those improvements were supposed to be done, I mean, those were in the plans back in 2012 as well. So from 2012 to now, there could have been some improvements there. I don't know exactly for sure if there were or not. But I just want to give thanks to the staff for doing these improvements right away within the last couple of months. Because when I go back to your, I go back to your mission statement.
Mr. Villarreal, your two minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We appreciate, appreciate you calling in.
And I appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you.
The next person, Mayor, is Robert Lechwich, 909 East Parkwood. Wasteful, wasteful misguided spending without voters' approval. Let me set the clock. Let me call him right now.
Hello?
Robert, this is Amanda from City Hall, and you signed up for Citizens Communication. I'm going to set the clock at two minutes. One moment, please. You may start now.
Okay, Mayor, Commissioners, I just wanted to say that the recent article where you guys are kind of moving forward with the second phase of the Destination Park is misguided. That money should not be allocated or voted to spend until after the election. One, two, it should have been put on a voter referendum considering the amount of that money. I've heard in the past that, that this 4B money cannot be used for drainage and infrastructure. And according to the local building code, it can be and it should be. And it also should be used for a better form of economic development, which it's not going to be if we use it for what you guys are designating it for. That's the poorest form of economic development investment you can make is what you're doing with it. And anything like that should be brought to the voters. Also wanted to point out that as you have on the agenda, the Texas Water Development Board item, you're just now negotiating a flood planning study. And you're already in Phase Two of part spending in the 4B balanced fund balance. I think that that money should be used for whatever potential grant funding match money may be required for drainage throughout the city. I think that would be more important than building a amphitheater in a, in a flood area like Monty Hill where people are already paying triple the flood insurance that they were two, three years ago because of the recent flood. I ask that y'all just take any further consideration of that, of spending on Phase Two until that settles. I'm going to rest with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to the next caller.
Next one, Mayor, is Juan V. Garcia, 5718 Wild Persimmons Street. This is in regards to drainage, and he has to be called.
Hi, this is Juan V. Garcia. Sorry, I missed your call. Please leave nothing to the telephone. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, this is Amanda Lisonda with the city of Harlingen. You submitted a public comment form and we're calling you. Mayor, would you like for him to call us back or?
Well, just leave the message that we called and.
Okay.
We'll deal with that if he calls back. So I don't, the next, the next person signed up.
The next person there is Ron Lozano, 2410 Riverside Drive, Items 11 and 12, and he would like to be called.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll call him on, when we get to Item 11.
Okay. So that's it, Mayor. No more.
All right, very good. Thank you. Item one is the approval of the minutes in the regular meeting of January 6, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is our motion to approve the minutes is presented.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Consent agenda items 2A through 2D is our motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Some move, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item three, consideration possible action to approve a resolution to execute an agreement with the Texas Water Development Board for funding of a regional flood planning study and authorize the city manager to represent the city of Harlingen and execute all documents in connection with the funding agreement.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is in regards to the upcoming Texas Water Development Board floods study, and it allows the city manager to execute the grant agreement.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Andy about the, the grant agreement? Hearing now is our motion to approve. Obviously, this is a very, very important.
Some move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Cameron County Hazard Mitigation Plan update 2021. Carlos?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item before you is a request to adopt the, the update to the Cameron County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, this plan is a planning document that identifies hazards, risks to both lives and properties here in our community and throughout Cameron County. Risks such as flooding, hurricanes, droughts, and so forth. Over the last 12 months, we've been working with Cameron County, Palm Valley, and our consultant H2O partners to update the plan. The, the plan is a requirement from FEMA and the TIDOM, the Texas Department of Emergency Management. And, and the, the update is a requirement to, that needs to be done every five years. The, the plan at this point has been completed. We did ask for public comment. We had a couple of public meetings throughout the course of the, of the update. And at this point, the TIDOM and the FEMA is requesting that each partner or entity, both the county, Palm Valley, and our, and the city of Harlingen, adopt through resolution the plan so that it's considered complete. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item five is a consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the anticipated Federal Aviation Administration Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act 2021 Grant 3-48-0101-065-21 in the amount of $2,761,597, contingent upon the receipt of the FAA grant. Marv?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. This is a, basically a CARES Act 2.0. It is under the Corona Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. It came out. There was $2 million or $2 billion that were set aside for airports for operational maintenance in response to COVID relief. They were divvied out, the, the funds were divvied out based on the payments at each airport. That puts us at $2,761,597 for the first grant for operational, operations and maintenance here at the airport. The, the Airport Board approved this, the acceptance, and recommended the city commission unanimously to accept this grant.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. I believe that the motion was by Commissioner Lial and seconded by variously, de la Rosa. Okay, we'll pick one, de la Rosa. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item six is a companion grant, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the anticipated Federal Aviation Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act 2021 Grant 3-48-0101-066-21 in the amount of $71,830, contingent upon the receipt of the FAA grant. Marv?
Yes, this is, like Mayor said, a companion grant. The use is the only thing different in this grant. We can utilize this money for, to actually reimburse ourselves for abatement and/or accommodations that we make for rental, for concessionaires inside the terminal building. So that's the only difference between this grant and the prior.
So this grant doesn't cover the stuff that you do for you. It's, it's more for your, your concessionaires?
Yes, it's, it's for concessionaire relief, for, for rental relief that, and will utilize that for our, our food and beverage and use and gift concession relief inside the terminal building.
Thank you. Motion to accept.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any other questions or discussion?
Just a great job, Marv. Thank you for the work and all of your staff. I really think we have the best run airport in the country.
Yeah.
I, I, I hats off to you and the continued hard work you continue to do for us.
If the article in the paper was correct, we, we, we got a lion's share of what was distributed in South Texas, it looks like.
There's no doubt. And I, I appreciate it, the comments, and I'll make sure I pass them on to our team. We have a great team out here.
And, and yes, and while we, we definitely appreciate Marv's leadership over there, as well as the board and Chairman Rubiano and now Chairman Alana, we also want to express our appreciation to our congressional delegation, Senator Cornyn, who has the grant, and also our, our other congressional delegation members, Senator Cruz and Congressman Vela. So we express our deep appreciation to them for supporting this grant money. So all those in favor say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Again, thank you to everybody who worked on this. Item seven is a consideration possible action to accept or reject bids received for bid number 2021-05, sale of real property, nine city-owned properties.
Good evening, Mayor Boswell and city councilors. In the beginning of this year, the city solicited bids for nine surplus properties currently owned by the city of Harlingen. We receive a total of two bids, which have been included in your agenda packet for your consideration. Statute does state that city commission is not required to accept any offer or to complete the sale. Staff's recommendation is to accept the two bids as presented. These are vacant properties in great need of redevelopment. And they will ultimately generate revenue for, for the city through permit fees or ad valorem taxes. This is an action item to either accept or deny the bids received. A resolution has been drafted by legal department. Should your decision be to approve and proceed with the sale of the properties.
All right, all right. Does anybody have any questions for Anna about this? These bids? If not, is there, is there a motion to accept or the bid as presented?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consideration and possible action to enter into an affiliation agreement with Texas State Technical College to facilitate access to students who will provide clinical assistance in relation to prevention of COVID-19 and administration of vaccines. Josh?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item before you is requesting authorization to allow us to enter into the agreement, an affiliation agreement with Texas State Technical College to facilitate access to students. This is to help us through the vaccination process and also providing the, the technical support that we need while administering these vaccines. We recommend that you allow us to continue doing this.
Question. When you say students, please identify what type of students.
Those are college students already met the requirement, state requirements for administering vaccines.
And some of these, the nursing students, we're not talking about welding students, are we?
Correct, sir. Correct. We're identifying directly the nursing program from the college.
Okay. Just to clarify.
Yes, thank you.
Did they help with the vaccine, vaccine clinic last week?
No, sir. We had some other students from.
Okay.
Health Science Center and UTR2, but they're eagerly waiting to, to help us.
All right, very good. Any other questions or discussion? Was there a motion to approve the, the affiliation agreement?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. And, you know, I think that we will be receiving, hopefully, and soon, a lot more vaccine, and we will be needing a lot more help. And so this will be, this is lining things up to be able to, be able to effectively and and efficiently continue our programs here of administering vaccinations. So thank you for getting this done. Item nine, consideration and possible action to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Health Services to exchange patient information on their MTrak II system. Josh?
Mayor and Commissioners, again, this item is in relation to the COVID-19 vaccine clinics that we're hosting. We're requesting your approval to enter to this MOU with the state to continue utilizing their software system to enter patient information as, as needed as we administer the vaccines for, for residents. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the memorandum?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, I'm going to pass item 10, which is still on the table until the city manager can be here to share some additional information with us. Item 11, consideration and possible action to approve the use of the community center as a standby shelter to assist loaves and fishes with immigrants in Harlingen.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, as you know, we've had an influx of immigrants coming into town. So far, loaves and fishes has been able to use their shelter and place some of the overflow in hotels. What we want to try to do is make the community center available for loaves and fishes to handle any overflow that they won't be able to handle at the center. So they won't be needing the facility every single day, only on those occasions where they've got an increased number of immigrants coming in. The city manager has authorized us to place this on the agenda for your approval. And if there's any funding that would be needed, loaves and fishes would use the $75,000 that the city made available for immigrant care at the last meeting. So staff is recommending approval, and the only thing they would need from us is a facility. Loaves and fishes would actually provide the labor and any other supplies that would be needed. Staff recommends approval.
May I ask a question?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Victor.
Oh, I think he had a public comment, but.
Well, I was going to let him, I was going to let him comment at the, well, let's go ahead and let him comment.
Let's go ahead and let him comment. He may, he asked something that I, or say something that I may have a question on, so I'll, I'll defer.
All right.
Bill is here, because you have any questions for that also?
Right. I see, I see him on Zoom.
Okay, and he'll, and he'll, ask him to make his comments on both 11 and 12 at this time.
How you doing, Mandan? Man?
Hi, Ron. You have two minutes, and the mayor is allowing you to speak on item 11 and 12. So I'm going to go ahead and start the.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I want to speak the, the two minutes on item 11 and then two minutes on item 12. But let me go ahead and start by what the mayor just mentioned, that the city manager is close. I wanted to extend my condolences on behalf of the loss of his mother. And one of the quips that Mr. Gonzalez made, obviously, last September around the 16th, the budget was passed and an allocation was given to loaves and fishes. And, well, I'm not going to go into what happened the following day, but regardless, the quip right now was that the $75,000 that was recently allocated was for immigrant care. And I hope that that's going to be bolstered by Mr. Reagan, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for. Now, today's article in the local organ emphasized, instead of the care, the fact that the immigrants may not be tested. However, the head of Homeland Security, a little over 48 hours ago, reiterated that the US will not allow anybody of any condition, even if they don't consider themselves a migratory, to come into the country unless they're testing negative for COVID, or they have to wait for two weeks. And so that's the current policy. The fear-mongering that was printed today was not typical of that particular author. And so I just want to at least delay some of the concerns that Victor might be going towards. There is no COVID threat. Thank you. On item 11, but I want to speak briefly, not until I want to get a chance. Thank you. It will be less than two minutes.
Please, please go ahead and speak on 12 while we have you on the phone. Just work, work with us, please, since we have, this is a difficult process.
He hung up, Mayor.
All right, item 11, is there, does anybody have any questions before making motions?
I, I, that, that, I, I think what Ron alluded to was the question I was going to ask, because the, the, the author of the paper said that, and I had heard the same that. So Bill, I mean, are you aware whether or not they're actually testing these folks before they're releasing them to us?
Yeah, thank you, Victor. And first of all, thank you to the city managers for this great support and friendship and encouragement, and to you, Mayor and city commissioners, for all that you're doing to help us during this really difficult time. What I understand, Victor, is this, and I, I certainly could be wrong, but what I understand is that those asylum seekers who have been in Mexico because of the migrant protection protocol are tested before they come into the United States and only allowed into the United States if they test negative. The last word I heard from Chief Hastings, the chief of the Border Patrol, and that may have changed, because that's been maybe a week or so ago, we had one of these Zoom meetings with all of the shelters and with the Border Patrol, is that they were not testing other people who were coming across the border. That asylum seekers who were coming across the border now, or recent weeks, were not being tested. They were being kept in their facility for as long as they could. The families are released into the United States and individuals are returned to Mexico. So Brownsville and McAllen particularly, but also we have seen a number of families come to our shelter who have been released by Border Patrol. My understanding is that those people have not been tested. That's why we test them.
And so what my question is, Bill, that, I, I understand that you, you have an area beside your building where they're staying until they're tested, because we, we want to keep the, the populations separate.
Correct.
Will that be the same in the community center? Or will the community center be a mix of people that can or possibly positive with COVID?
That's really an important point.
That's my big concern.
My, sorry about that. That was my watch, I guess.
And that's mine.
All right. This is the way I hope it works. We have set up two tents in the parking lot, a large tent that will be a staging area for when the Border Patrol brings us migrants that they are releasing. A smaller tent will be used for testing for COVID. A company, a company very generously offered, and thanks to Gabe for this, offered to test all of the folks who come to our facility free of charge. Those who test positive, we plan to take straight to the hotel. Those who test negative, if there's capacity, we'll take them to the hotel. If there's not capacity, if they test negative, they can come into the dining hall. The concern I have is that because of COVID, everybody else, we have certain parts of our building that were available two years ago that are not now. And that the maximum number of people we can accommodate in the dining hall to maintain social distancing and all that other business is 40 individuals. There were times a couple of years ago when we would receive more than 100 people a day. I don't know whether that will be the case this time around. I suspect it will. And so my hope is that the people that we would place into the community center would be the overflow of people who test negative. Although, you know, if there's no place else to put the positive people, we might have to do that. I don't foresee it, but, you know, renting, for instance, a week ago, we rented 20 hotel rooms for three nights. You know, that's expensive. I'm grateful for the, for the support, but there's probably a limit to how many times we can do that. So I want to just try to be proactive and be, be able to place these folks in suitable accommodations until they leave. I think you all know that almost all of them leave the same day or the next day if they can.
So may I, may I ask a question? If, hopefully not, but if you have, if you're having to be put in that position where you have to commingle the infected with not infected, do you, do you let the people that are not infected know? Are they going to be aware of it, or they're not going to be aware of it?
Yeah, Richard, that's another really great question. You know, Ron mentioned the article this morning in the paper, and I did say, you quoted me correctly, that the testing is really almost useless, because these folks have been in detention together. They've been in close quarters. They've been under difficult circumstances for weeks sometimes. They're brought together on the bus.
So they've, they've been...
May, have recently been exposed, you know?
Yes, sir.
I can foresee, now, if we do need to use the community center, that's a pretty big room. I can foresee asking positive folks to be on one side of the building and negative to be on the other. I'm not so sure that's great mitigation. But again, I really hope we're able to, to only send people who are negative to the community center. The first group we received, 25% tested positive. So, you know, we get 100 people a day, 25%, I think we can put them in hotel. I'm sorry, Richard.
No, I'm sorry, but that's a really good point. I think that's an important point. It's not like they're coming together for the first time. I guess that makes me feel a little better, the understanding of what you're trying to accomplish, that they've already been together for, for an extended period of time. So I thank you for that. That gives me some clarification.
And Bill, just, just so that we can be transparent here, we're not talking about people who are exhibiting extreme symptoms. You're testing these people, and they, this may be the first time that they know that they're positive, or please, please enlighten me, because I just want to make sure that I really understand what you're having to deal with. Because, and I do, and I do know what, what you're trying to do. I just want to make sure I'm clear in my mind.
Sure, of course. I'm more than happy to, the more people who know what's going on, there's more understanding there is in the community, right?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't think they've been tested before. And I don't think that the asylum seekers who are coming to us have a real grasp on what COVID-19 is. I'm sure they've heard of it. But I, I think their priority has been getting to the United States, you know, and they haven't worried too much about whether they're going to have COVID or not. In the first group we had, there was one child who looked like he was pretty sick.
Okay.
Everybody else seemed to be without symptoms. I just don't know.
You said exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, for Mr. Reagan, again, thanks for everything that you do. We really appreciate it. So my question is, if we, if we do have that overflow, and we have to house them in the community center, we're talking about families only, or are these individuals?
My understanding is that Border Patrol is releasing to us and also in the other cities, only families.
Okay. So my, my next, so that leads into the next question. If, and I'm assuming if they're families, and we do have to go to that point where we're going to have to separate the ones who may have tested positive and the ones that are negative, it's not going to be tearing families apart or anything like that. We're still going to be able to kind of keep them in.
That's a great clarification. Thank you, Frank. I suppose it's going to be the case as we test them, that one member of a family may be positive and the others may be negative. The whole family goes to the hotel room.
Okay.
We, we can't do anything like that. We can't quarantine them. Even though they test positive, they're going to leave the next day. They're going to get on the bus or the airplane, and they're gone.
Okay. Thanks for me. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for Bill or for Gabe?
Just a big thank you, Bill. Thank you. We're going to miss you.
He's not going anywhere.
Behind me.
We're gonna, he may not be over there at loaves and fishes, but we've still got him.
No, we need him at loaves and fishes. So, okay.
I want to take care of loaves and fishes just fine.
I'd like to make the motion that we, we move forward with this, Mayor.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I got it.
Is there any other discussion? I think the important thing to remember here is that these families are being, or individuals are being released into the community by the Border Patrol. And whether we want them to do that or don't want them to do that, they are doing it. And, and loaves and fishes is for our community undertaking the burden of trying to assist with the orderly transition as they move from point A to point B. And everyone rightfully and appropriately thank Bill and his team for doing what they're doing. And this is just to help him and that organization, loaves and fishes, fulfill their mission and, and provide backup in case their facilities and the hotels can accommodate the release of these individuals. So again, I want to express my appreciation to loaves and fishes for what they're doing, because I think this is a better solution than just not having any solution. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Bill, for being here tonight. Item 12, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution appointing an early ballot board presiding judge and alternate presiding judge, and presiding judges and alternate presiding judges to serve as election officials on Election Day for the city of Harlingen May 1st, 2020 general election. Let's go ahead and call Mr. Lozano back, telling him he has one minute. Perhaps he did not hear that I asked him to speak on both items when he was called the first time. So we'll go ahead and call him this time. But in the future, he'll have to abide by the rules that we set up regarding...
Did I just say correctly, Mayor? Set him up for one minute? Ron, this is Amanda. Ron, we're on item number 12 now, and I'm going to set you up for one minute.
Hold on. Mayor, as a lawyer, I hope we have a better discussion about what the real rule is here. It's not going to be limited to Harlingen. This is a statewide thing. Regardless, on the item about the election, it just, as I mentioned on Monday, and thank you for the vote on item 11, Department of Homeland Security's top guy is emphatic about people are not getting in unless they're negative. For two weeks, their CDC guidelines are now law. And on, Supreme Court don't get yesterday and took up the case on voting. There's nothing more sacred for democracy than voting. You're raising the rates for the people. I hope you draw some competent people by the minimal rates that you're doing. So I'm in favor of you paying them more, because we need people to run the elections. Thank you very much, Mayor. And look forward to visiting with you about Texas Open Meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Amanda, would you like to go ahead and proceed with the item?
Yes, Mayor. This is the standard resolution there that we've used in the past. And the people that are mentioned in the resolution are the people that have worked with us before during joint elections and even when we do our own elections. All these people that are mentioned in the resolution have been verified as far as their voting status and other issues such as not being related to any of the candidates, being a resident of the city. All those requirements that they have to meet have been checked. So I recommend that these people be appointed, but also the school board will be acting on the same thing on March the 9th. So this resolution is also subject to their approval. We recommend approval, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 13, consideration and possible action to increase the hourly rate for election officials and publish a notice in the newspaper to solicit clerks to assist in the election process.
Mayor's staff is recommending to increase the, the rate of the judges and the clerks. The last time that the city increased the rates was in 2016. And this time, we're recommending to approve the rate for the judges from $12 to $15, for the alternate judge from 10 to 14, and the clerks from 9 to 13. This will help us attract more people. Right now, during the pandemic, I mean, it's very hard. We're having a hard time to recruit people. We're trying also to publish a notice, asking for approval to publish a notice to solicit perks. As far as the amount, the rate or the net increase that will result from this rate would be $1,745. The last time that we increased the rate was something like $574. The cost will be, the previous cost was $4,370, which was shared by the school, 50 and 50. And then the new cost will be $6,115. So the city share overall will be
Anybody have any questions?
Amanda, when you quoted these numbers, is this per day or per hour? If you could just clarify for the public.
I didn't understand your question, sir.
Okay, you, you said $12 to $15. Is that per day or per hour?
Per hour, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then is there a motion to increase the hourly rate and publish the notice?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Opposed.
Motion carries, but noting in opposition. Next item is board appointments.
I have none, sir.
Mayor, I have one. Roel Rodriguez, I'd like to appoint him to the Harlingen Library Advisory Board.
Who is that?
Roel Rodriguez.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I have a few. These are reappointments. Abby Warschowski, Chuck Mattingly, and Richard Newman to the Civil Service Commission, Carlos Meys, and Carlos Pettis to the Harlingen Housing Authority Board, and Joanna Lozano, Brianna Vela, and Nick Consiglio to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. All right. Item 15 is an executive closed session on the following items. A, attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.071, Texas Government Code, seek advice regarding the city's legal duties and obligations in connection with pending litigation filed under number 2108 versus the City of Harlingen Civil Action 120 CB 163 in the United States District Court of Southern District, Brownsville Division, and related legal matters. And B, economic development negotiations deliberation pursuant to Section 521.087, Texas Government Code, to deliberate the offer of financial and other incentives to a business prospect regarding the Development Corporation of Harlingen Performance Agreement pertaining to Project Sunroof. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're following a live streaming, we're going to go to another room and conduct our executive session, consult with our attorney. And we will be returning to this live stream open session when we're done with that. Thank you. All right. Then ladies and gentlemen, we are out of executive session at 6:39 PM. I'm going to go to item 16, which is consideration and possible action regarding the Development Corporation of Harlingen Performance Agreement pertaining to Project Sunroof. Is there a motion to approve the performance agreement as presented in the executive session?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. Those opposed? All right. The motion carries, and that concludes our business for the evening. Thank everybody for their cooperation and stay safe, be careful, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.